Okay, so at this time, we'll call our meeting order for the October 3rd, 2022. Everyone will join me and stand up, and we'll do our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in heart. Thank you, let me see. Appreciate everyone coming out here on a cool fall night. No more hot nights in Sparta. It's all gonna be cool from here on out, so that's great. Counsel, you have before you the agenda for tonight. If there's any additions or changes to the agenda, I'll add them at now to your request.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to add that the personnel matter closed session.
Personnel closed session. Anybody else have anything?
Mr. Mayor, I have a last-minute rezone request.
Rezoning request? You wanna do that on other business or with the others?
Yes, sir.
That being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So.
Motion and second only in, all in favor, show of hands. We'll go three oh on that agenda for tonight. Before you also have the minutes of our regular meeting on September 12th. If you have a chance to look over them, and I'll entertain a motion to accept them as they have been presented.
So, no.
Motion and second, all in favor, show of hands. Three oh on that. We are at the point of our meeting where we have our first public comments. This is on agenda items and agenda items only. As you have, the agendas are on the podium. If you'd like to make a comment right now about anything that's on the agenda, I'll give you a couple minutes there. If not, we'll proceed into our agenda meeting here tonight. So there being no movement, we'll close our first public comments. And we'll ask Mr. Tracy Thodde to come up.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I appreciate the opportunity to come before tonight. I have these, and I'll hand out afterwards if that's okay. But basically, I am here as a representative of Culture for Christ. It's a group that is here locally. We do thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak tonight just for a few minutes. My wife and I are a part of this group, and we're just a group of conservative Christian citizens who stand against legislation and government action that threatens essential constitutional American freedoms, such as the right to life, religious liberty, and then godly family values. We do meet, we meet once a month. They're actually over there, they're meeting tonight. And there's more about who Culture for Christ is in what I'll give you. But in a nutshell though, well, I'll just let you read, I'll let you read. Unfortunately, in today's public policy affects every aspect of our society and culture. The basic grassroots principles seem to be going to the wayside. And so that's why we have sort of all come together. We started out as a, we still have a watchers group. It meets on Sunday, or I'm sorry, on Wednesday afternoons as well. Just to talk about things that are going on, how it relates prophetically. But through us, we have got in contact with the folks with the Faith and Freedom Coalition, and that's a lot about what I wanted to speak about tonight. And Mr. Mayor, I did speak with you, your wish so go. And I've got some of these handouts. This event, well, first I'll tell you that the Faith and Freedom Coalition started some years back. The North Carolina chapter, I think, started in about 2009 or something. And I'm gonna read one of their little things here from their page. I apologize, they were, in 2019, they actually started that. And they share organizations, the whole organization's values of faith, family, personal responsibility, and service to the needy. And again, just like us, they are nonprofit, nonpartisan, but they're just out there trying to get folks to make sure you come and vote, but it's seeing it what both parties offer. So again, it's nonpartisan and all that kind of good stuff, so. But again, they are gonna have, we got hooked up with them. We're having a bold and courageous tour. It will be held up here on October 14th at Cornerstone Christian Fellowship. They have a nice facility, so that's why we're having it there. We're not necessarily associated or affiliated with them, so. But it is a Saturday again, it's at 10:00 a.m. We're having a pastor's breakfast from 10:00 to 10:30. Everything else, all others, all us common folk will be meeting in the, what they have is the fellowship hall. We're looking for maybe an hour, two hours. There will be some music, there'll be some worship, but there's gonna be good speakers. You've got folks that are in the political scene, as well as others, just all around. Just those that's gonna be talking about values and such. And so just a mixture of faith and community leaders. So it should be a good event. We've had a lot of good feedback and a lot of good, a lot of people signing up. So there is a website, ncfaithandfreedom.com is where you go. And you can sort of put in there for tickets, tickets are free. All this is free, don't cost anybody anything. But I, we just wanna encourage everybody to come and be a part of this. So if I can, I'll tell you this has got who we are. So, thanks, sir.
That's alright, John, we didn't wait on.
First of all, time of the meeting?
It'll be 10:00 a.m. From 10:00 a.m., it may last till 11:00, it may last till 12:00. The more that we can get signed up, the better and the more speakers there will be. They just had, the same coalition just had one down in Marion, North Carolina. It was a soft and light event, as they call it, where ours is bold and courageous. But I think they had 30 speakers with the likes of Mike Huckabee and all kinds of good stuff. So we were looking to try to, we were trying our best to get Mark Robinson to come, but he was already spoken for. So, but anyway, again, just appreciate the opportunity to speak. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, councilman.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it. Up next, we have a update from the Allegheny Arts Council, Cole Baker Bagway.
Hi.
Is that right?
Yes.
I said all three right.
You said all three right. I was just like a law firm. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, town council members. It's wonderful to be here. This is my first, this is my first meeting here in Sparta, and I'm really excited. I've been looking forward to it. So I'm on the Board of Directors for the Allegheny Arts Council. And before I get into that, I want to start with a story. My husband and I bought our home up here in 2021. It was a part fluke, part divine, you know, intervention. And we had never heard of Sparta before. And we, you know, bought the house, and we spent time from a back and forth between Raleigh and Sparta. And something really magical happened that summer. We went to a Music on Main event, and it was like amazing for us. The street flooded with people, and they weren't on their cell phones. There were children playing and talking, and family members talking to one another. And that night, that one night of music and dancing and just fun, made us know that we wanted to be our roots here in Sparta. So that December, my husband said, hey, if I can get a job up there, he's a teacher, would you move from the big city of Raleigh, where we live downtown? And I said, I would. And I don't know how it happened, I mean, a lot of great people sort of went to bat for him, and he got a job, and he's a teacher at the Allegheny High School. And we uprooted our lives, and we put down our roots here, and we have never been happier. So, but that Music on Main event, the kindness that we experienced that night on the, on the street, the dancing, the laughter, the joy, like all of it, the mountains, like it just made us fall in love with this place. And that was the reason that I was, you know, I was persuaded to join the Arts Council and happily said yes, because I wanted to be a part of creating more of that for other people who lived here and became. So what I'd like to do tonight is connect everybody with what the arts really bring to a community in a very succinct way, to thank you for all of the support that you've given us so far, and to highlight a few of the things that we've done, and then kind of open up the conversation from here moving forward about other things that we could be doing to bring more of that joy and life to the community. So I'm a researcher, so there's been a lot of research done that I've looked into about what do arts bring to a community? And what they bring is so much more than the music and the theater and pretty pictures. What the arts bring are a way for communities to identify, to create bonds that strengthen. And those bonds that strengthen us actually help to improve mental health rates, like decrease the mental health issues that we experience as communities. They help us feel a place of belonging, and they help us create a story together. So, I mean, this is, this is more important than our job. It's more important than where we come from or how much money we have. The arts have that power, and the research is there to back it. So that's the great news. We already have that here going on in Sparta. So over this past year, we've delivered Music on Main, you know, from June through October. The lashes coming up, October 7th, I hope you see everybody out there dancing. We have delivered Saturdays in the Park over in Prowse Park, you know, a place that people, I was told, didn't go to much long ago. And now it's filled with people and families and picnics, and it's wonderful. Memories are being made. And we've also offered a new program to the community this year called Taste of the Arts. And that program highlights every single artist here who wants to raise their hand and say yes. And it gives local community members and travelers alike a chance to come in and try something new. So maybe they've been wondering, like, could I throw a pot? I watched Ghost, and that movie really was kind of cool, and I'm wondering if I could make my own pot to take home. I wonder if I could paint. I wonder if I could learn how to cook. These are all the things that Taste of the Arts has brought. And Feast of Friends, which was a big community dinner that we did for the first time ever at Muddy Creek this year, was a huge success. People meeting each other and creating that community, strengthening those bonds. So I wanted to give you a little overview of what we've done. We will have much more of us moving forward. We hope to also include some children's programming as we move forward. And to do that, we're going to need not only the continued support of the individuals that have been generous in giving us a dollar here and a dollar there, the corporate donors who have been so generous to back us, but also the support of every single member of the town council. So thank you so much for your time, and I hope to see you on October 7th, dancing with me on the street.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you for that update. Continue with that theme, but we have another update from the Allegheny Chamber of Economic Development. Let's move some on.
Hello. Hope everyone's doing well tonight. Thank you for having me. This will take a few minutes, so I had been here in a few months. I had to keep rescheduling, so I have quite a bit to update. In front of you, you have a manila folder. That is my report. And there's a lot of information in there, so I'll try to run through it very quickly for you. I do just want to let you know that the Chamber of Economic Development, Chamber of Commerce, whatever you might call us, we're not a typical Chamber of Commerce. You know, there's been, you know, questions about whether or not certain things, you know, should fund us or how much we should be funded. So I just kind of want to go over a little bit. The Chamber right now, we're not only doing our Chamber of Commerce work, which is working with our members, but we also assist with town beautification. We hold events each year to no cost to the public. We're doing limited, but we are still doing economic development activities, community development activities, and tourism marketing for the town of Sparta and for Allegheny County. I looked up some statistics and from the Carolinas Association for Chamber Executives. When they looked at the chambers across North Carolina and South Carolina, only 10% of chambers help with downtown Main Street, can't talk, downtown Main Street efforts. Only 27% to economic development. Around 45% help with recruitment, business recruitment, and only 32% help with tourism. So we are in those percentages, because we have our hands in a little bit of everything on that. So you're looking at 67 points, 67% of chambers do not even assist with tourism as we know it, helping with Allegheny County and town marketing. So I just wanted to bring that up, that we are kind of a unique chamber. Your first handout in your packet should say at the top, Allegheny Chamber for Economic Development report to Sparta Town Council, October 23rd. This is quite a lengthy report, I won't go over everything. I just wanted to point out, under each month are our activities that we do as a chamber. As you can see, through January, through May, we have, we do work on the visitor's guide. We do community, we start adding events to our community calendar. We do Facebook, Instagram postings. We organize planters and flowers downtown. We organize banners for Main Street. We have grant funds. We arranged and supported the visitor's center renovation for a better visitor experience. We have painted, we had all the trim done. We also took about 20 pieces of local photography and had them put on canvas. So when you walk into the chamber down left-hand side, that entire wall is nothing but local photography, and it's all Allegheny and Sparta and North Carolina. The Chamber assists with selling. We helped with community events like empty bowls, attended and distributed information at Apple Pie Festival. Throughout the summer, we began to post things to do this weekend, social media posts. Those have slacked off just a little bit because we're so short-staffed right now at the chamber. In June, we attended Fiber Fest, Lawn Mower Race, provided Allegheny materials, market June events. July, we held the Fourth of July Parade. We provided materials for the Fiddlers Convention both days. We set up a table with local information. And we also had Allegheny packets for the Allegheny Folk Show. In August, we, we had our magazines and information outside at Allegheny Agricultural Fair. We were not able to attend because we were short-staffed, and provided welcome bags for the VFW Car Show, which we do every year. Just a few weeks ago, we had a Mountain Heritage Festival. I hope some of you were able to be there, but it was one of the largest crowds we've had in a very long time. Our vendors walked away very happy. We had a lot of early bird registrations for next year. So I do find, I do feel like it was a great event, and anywhere, it's very hard to count people at that event. I did try, but they're coming from every side street, every, every entrance you can think of. But within an hour, I had counted 2,000 people in just that one hour. So I, and that was at 10 o'clock that morning, I mean, I'm sorry, 11 o'clock that morning. So I just quit counting, but we do estimate around 6,000 people were in attendance that day. We had 50 art and craft vendors, 12 food vendors, and 15 nonprofits, and we also had kid corner activities. The LJ Pro Rodeo, we did have a hand in getting them here. About a year ago, I met with that company. I asked them to come to Sparta. We toured the fairgrounds, talked about them coming, and we were so glad that they came. Of course, we did have to hand all the credit to Randy Murphy and his bunch for really facilitating all that with them and working so well with them at the fairgrounds. But we were glad to be part of that. October, December, we will have packets for the monthly events. Trunk and Treat is upcoming, we'll talk about that in a little bit. Our Christmas Parade, Christmas Tree Lighting. And we also do a big push for promote shopping local in newspapers, social media, and so forth. Year-round, the Chamber staffs and operates Allegheny County Visitor's Center. Town Sparta Supplies Building, of course. The county funds a visitor's center 15,000 a year. For full cost of operating the visitor's center includes staff 46,000 plus per year. Some other activities, if you want, this is where in your packet you have copies of, you have colored copies of a lot of the ads that we designed or that we have someone design that we put out into magazines. If you want to take a look at those that are in your packet. But also, we have a sponsored article in our state magazine. We worked on WBTV commercials, we had one billboard. September, December, I did radio interviews for 107.9, and those were highlighting events in Sparta, North Carolina. September, we were also in the WNC magazine, and you have a copy of that ad. In October, we will have an article with our state magazine, ourstate.com on our digital page. We have an ad, we, this year, did an ad in the Blue Ridge Music Center Program Book Clip. We assisted with the Visit North Carolina Digital Campaign for Sparta, North Carolina. You do have handouts of that entire campaign in your packet. It's all stapled together. It just shows screenshots and some of the things that they ran on Facebook and on Instagram. We got them here with assistance from the TDA, with TDA funding. They had a few places they wanted to go, but they will tell you how irritating I was, and I was able to get them in a lot of our stores. So I'm like, hey, you gotta see this, hey, you gotta see this. But at the end of the day, they are ones who have creative control. I took them into Hills, I took them into just about every store on Main Street if they were open. But at the end of the day, they do highlight certain things that are attractive to tourists or things that they think will pull people into Sparta. We spent some time with Sparta Candle Company, and I want to thank Cole and Jennifer for hosting us for a little while. But it was a great campaign. They are doing two more campaigns in Sparta, and that's what, you know, things to do in Sparta and outdoors. So they will be doing that moving forward. We collaborated with WKSK in Ash County for Sparta and North Carolina Imaging Campaigns. In your packet, you have a sample of one of those that mentions the events in Sparta, but it is about Sparta, North Carolina. We've done that now for three months. They are about $300 every month. So those are bringing a lot of attention to Sparta. We have ads, spring, summer, summer and fall. We do ads and articles in the Blue Ridge Digest Magazine. That's distributed all through North Carolina, Welcome Centers, and Virginia. And we also have them at the Visitor's Center here in Sparta. You have a copy of that in your packet, a couple of them, just some samples. By the end of October, we will have sent out over 40 e-briefings highlighting events and community information with TDA funding. Allegheny County will continue to have a half-page ad in the annual Blue Ridge Parkway Travel Guide. 300,000 copies of those are distributed. You have a copy of that as well in your packet. We do visitor packets through distribution of 2023. Will be an estimated 300-plus visitor packets for people who are coming out tomorrow again. Or we mail them, or they come through, a lot of groups request those. And we always include things about Allegheny and Sparta. Of course, we see that as one, one entity, basically. We also ran ads and local information, Allegheny News, New River Fall Guides, and so forth. Forcoming, I do want to bring this to your attention. We are currently working on a Visit Sparta NC Facebook page. This will be the official tourism and travel site for Sparta and North Carolina. It will not be to highlight that you have a washer and dryer on sale. It will not be if you have a dog, you need adopted. It will not be any of that. It will be strictly geared toward tourism and drawing people into Sparta. Whether we like it or not, whether citizens like it or not, tourism brings quite a bit of money into this county. We have tried to really keep it a very good balance where we don't overdo it, where we're not inundated, where we don't market too, too much. And a lot of people are fearful that we'll become like the next Pigeon Forge or that we'll become Murro Beach. I assure you, we will not. And I'll tell you why. We do not have the assets that a lot of those places have. We don't have the assets that Jefferson has or that, you know, a lot of these larger towns have. We also don't have the marketing money that they have to spend on getting people to their towns. We do what we can with what we have, and I think we do a pretty good job of getting the word out about Sparta and about Allegheny County. Now, when people come here, we have to offer them an experience as well. And that's what we continue to work on, is what can we give these people when they come? What can we do to make them want to come back? And I know there's a lot of people also that say, these tourists want to change us. Everyone who comes into the visitor's center, these are their exact words, we come here because of who you are. We came from so-and-so because there's too many people there, and we really like this town. We like the pace, we like the people, people have been so kind, so nice. So I just want everyone here to know that we are not trying to change Sparta or who we are as a culture and a heritage. What we're trying to do is bring in economic, bring in some economic impact. But to say that we will ever become this or that, if we do, it probably won't be in my lifetime, to be quite honest with you. That doesn't mean that we can't bring in money to Sparta to help with certain projects and with our community. Also forthcoming is a dedicated page to Sparta on the authentically Allegheny website in October. We are also looking at billboards for Sparta. We really don't have any data to know how impactful those are. So we're trying to think about that as far as, you know, is it worth it? Is there something else that we can spend a couple of grand on that might be more impactful? I did, I am working with Lamar Billboards at the time, looking for, you know, some locations. A lot of them are rented long-term in some of the spots that I thought would be appropriate. So we're still working on a location and a cost, so I'll give you more on that. Also, we are in the process of developing a Sparta, Town Sparta map. This will, it's not in your packet, because we're not done with it. But this is just an example of what that'll look like. We're gonna add some things on the back, a nice little cover, it'll be a trifold. What it is, is within the town limits, and all our businesses are numbered, and you have a key on the right-hand side that tells what the businesses are, and they're also categorized. So we're adding a few more businesses, a few more, you know, health-related places. And then on the back will be kind of a surrounding area, what's within a 30-minute drive of Sparta. So we're working on that, and I want to thank Kate Irwin for helping me with that project. She's actually doing the project, so thank you, Kate. So those are some things that we have upcoming, just that are related very specifically to Sparta. Right now, we have one staff at the chamber, that's Beth and I. We are together one staff. We're helping things together, I think, quite well, but it has put us a little behind on some projects. So if you'll just bear with me, what I don't want to do is, is leave the chamber and things be left kind of hanging out there. So please know though that those projects are on the way. On page three of your report, you have our visitor's center numbers. I won't go over those, but I do want you to see that we have increased our numbers this year from 2022. September, we have, I just want to point out, in September last year, we counted 143. This year, we had 202 visitors in the visitor's center. So not only are we marketing our town and our county, but we're marketing ourselves. Hey, come by, we can help you find what you need, activities in Sparta and Allegheny. Chamber member related, on your right, you can see highlights. We currently have 298 active members. We've done nine ribbon cuttings. I'm just gonna move on down. One thing I do want to point out is that we are now having the Blue Ridge Business Network meetings every month. Those are held over at the college. This is for any business owner, entrepreneur, anyone just interested in a monthly topic. Our attendance has been around 20 people per month. It's free of charge to anyone who comes. They get lunch, which is sponsored usually by a business, and people have loved it. And these are topics that help small businesses improve their business, to market, all kinds of things. And we work with the Small Business Development Center of Wicks Community College for that. I'm not gonna go over, but you can see the boards that we serve on. There's probably about 20 boards that we serve on, all community related. It's very important that the chamber's involved and the community so that we can help in any way possible, so that we can help our high school students, our college students, our adult learners. The chamber should and is involved in those boards. Next page, marketing tourism related. I'll let you read over that. I'll move on down to the economic development, quite a bit there. But just want you to know that we have been involved from the very beginning with the town of Sparta in that creative placemaking initiative, and also in the strategic planning process for Sparta that came out of the grant that they received. I attend a lot of conferences to represent Sparta and Allegheny County. I'm often the only one there. So I encourage you, at every, at every opportunity, if you have a chance to be at the table for Sparta, please do. We are the lead organization for the Building Outdoor Communities Initiative. Hopefully, the group that we kind of gathered will stick with me through that. And what that is, is just building our current assets and outdoor assets. It's not really trying to, you know, spend money. What we're hoping is that grant money will become available to maybe improve some of our parks or the, maybe, you know, whatever that looks like, maybe develop some trails up the sand ground, I don't know. Whatever we decide as a group and as a community. But that outdoor economy initiative could be very helpful. I did tend, oh, I'm sorry, I'm also involved with Gateway Community Initiative at the Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation. What we are doing along with the associations, we're looking at how to draw people off the parkway into these small towns as an economic driver. So if you're up at Downton Park, you know what, maybe we should drive into Sparta, and we should, you know, shop there, and maybe we should stay there. So that's what that whole initiative's about. They are working with 30 counties across North Carolina and Virginia for that initiative. Alright, so that is that very lengthy, and I'm very sorry, lengthy report. Any questions on that piece of it? No? Okay. Also, in your book, I mean, in your folder, you have a draft of a cost analysis for marketing and activities. I just wanted, this is a draft, this is gonna go in the TDA Annual Marketing Plan that we're working on. What this does is because we receive funding from the T- What this does is because we receive funding from the TDA, we also receive funding from the Town of Sparta. We want to show our funders what your money's going towards, so that you know we're not kicked back in my, in my office eating bonbons with my feet up on them. We are actually doing a lot of really good and very important work. And it does break it down on this report, an estimated cost of what we do. Won't go over it all, but I do want you to take a look at it. Again, this is draft, so it's still in the works. It's not the gospel. It may change two or three times before that plan is finalized. But I do want you to see that. I want you to look at that and know that we are working hard as a chamber. It brings out Visitor Center costs, our magazine costs, community calendar, weekly newsletter, social media, our tourism information provided, who we provide it to, tourism-related conferences. We do all that at our cost, local events at our cost. And we pay for the insurance for all the free events that we offer in Allegheny County. We make no money off the parades, off of trunk and tree, off the Christmas tree, off of anything we do except for the Mountain Heritage Festival. That's a fundraiser for us, and honestly, it benefits the town more than it does us. We probably make around $7,000 off that event, as big as it is. So we have a list of how we manage those events, how much our insurance costs this year for that. Our staff time is significant. We have people working on the weekends, late in the evenings for that. And then just to let you know that we are doing the TDA administrative work. The TDA, even though it's a county entity, it really does benefit all of Allegheny and all of Sparta events and organizations. So I just want to make sure that is well, well-heard and well-known. And then in your packet, you have copies of all the ads. I'm not all of them, but a sample, if you have any questions about those. Also, Mr. Manager, I have three events. I need approved. If I could get those, please. We have Trunk and Tree. We do each year for our kids. We have thousands of kids who come out to that event. I don't know, but they, they love, they love it. And it's held on Main Street, or it was last year. It'll be on Halloween night, October 31st. We would like to run it again from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We ask that the street close at 5:30, which gives everyone time to pull in their car and set up their trunks. And it will end promptly at 8 o'clock. We do not let it run over. It ends at 8 o'clock p.m., period. And then we open the street up at 8:30 p.m. for local traffic. So I would like to ask that that event be approved for October 31st of 2023, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The street is closing at 5:30.
That is on Tuesday night. It'd be in the middle of, and the motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
And second, all in favor, show of hands, for the tree, four of them.
And I'll get with Chief about all the traffic stuff. All right. Our next event that I would like to get approved is the Sparta Christmas Parade, which will be held on Saturday, November 25th. Our parade begins at 2:00 p.m., so the street is closed down just right before then. And I've worked with Chief here since I run now on the parade, so I think we've got a good system now. But I do ask that it's on Saturday, November 25th. That's a Saturday after Thanksgiving. Street's closing a little before 2:00 p.m. Usually opening back up within an hour, hour fifteen minutes. So I'll need approval for that.
Want to move, motion? Second, all in favor, show of hands, for the Christmas Parade on November 25th.
All right, and one more. And I may have to wait on this. You all can decide, but I thought if I was here, I might as well try to throw it in. Each year, we do a tree lighting celebration at the courthouse. Last year, we closed the street for about 30 minutes, just to light the tree, to sing a few songs, and to have some cocoa. It's very short and sweet. Santa came out, and Miss Santa introduced themselves, and everyone had a really good time. It's a very small gathering. We're not sure if it's going to be the first or second weekend in December, probably that first weekend. But we would ask that we close the streets for about 30 minutes for that. I can wait if you need an exact date, or we can go ahead and approve it, and then I can give the date to Chief on that, when I find out from Santa Claus. He's a little waiting on that. He's a very, very busy man, so it might take a few days to hear it from me.
So it'd either be, you know, it'd either be December 2nd or December 9th.
Yes. It'll be one of those dates, and as soon as I hear back from him.
I don't think we have anything else planned for it. There's, I mean, you can make a motion. We're going to get it today.
Second.
And the second, all in favor, show of hands, for the tree light, and that's four of them.
Okay. All right. Before I leave, just any questions or any comments about the Facebook page that I'm doing, about the map that I'll be doing, or your page on the website? Again, these will be tourist-focused, because that's what we do. We're responsible for the marketing. It will not be to post, like I said, yard sale items or anything like that. It'll be to draw visitors to Sparta to shop, dine, eat, play, stay. So any comments about that, any at all, before I leave?
Counsel, do you have anything that you'd like to ask me?
Is that agreeable, the name of it? Visit Sparta NC, the Facebook page.
Good census as well. Counsel, let it go, everybody?
Everybody else said, "To their benefit," so why not you all?
It's not to my benefit, actually. It's to yours. So we are actually marking Sparta as a destination. I don't get anything out of it, because, I mean, you all helped fund us, and this is our...
I didn't name that in the negative.
Okay. This is our way of...
Everybody else uses Sparta, so it seems to work.
Well, I think this will be, we're going to ask actually the TDA to help support this, so that it is an actual official page for Sparta. A lot of towns have them. I think it'll be a good way to share events that are going on in Sparta, what's happening here within the town limits. So I think it'll be a good thing.
I encourage you. And one thing I always encourage, too, is plenty of photos of what, of all the events that's going on, so that you can actually see. Photos speak volume. But thank you for all your hard work. Thank you, Beth. I just want to say this. Apple Pie Festival and Mountain Heritage Festival combined probably brought in almost 15,000 people in this town. Those two events was huge. And that's not counting everything else that's going on. So we got a lot of stuff going on. We got a lot of people coming through, so we'll put our best foot forward, look good, and bring them on.
Yeah, and I really do, just publicly, want to say thank you to Beth Phillips, who works in our chamber. She has stuck with me through a lot of transition these past few months. And we put that event on, the two of us, and about five volunteers. It is a lot of work, and we were very proud of how it turned out. And I invite you all to always come out to our events, and to the Arts Council events, and to everything that you possibly can. Because I will tell you that nonprofits do not, we do not get any money from the events that we do. We don't use it for anything else, except we put it right back into that event for the next year. We're not taking it, going shopping, and like I said, eating bonbons. It is for the community. So I just want you all to remember that there's a lot of work going into these events to provide, you know, things for this community. And we should be very thankful that we have the people doing it.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate all your work. Appreciate you. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Town Manager Ryan Wilber. He's going to talk to you about a zoning request, parcel number 3070796243.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Town Council, this is the request from last month. I'm requesting we delay that public hearing until next month.
Show move.
Motion is second, all in favor, of delaying the public hearing, four of them now. Go ahead, and if you want to continue on, I guess I'll let you do the September tax release, or we want to go with this show on that. Your guys.
Town Council, putting them in your packet is three spreadsheets. Two of those are for information purposes only. The only item needing action, there's one real property release in the amount of $175.50. It's for a veteran's school check. We need to accept that.
Make the move. A motion, make the motion.
Make the motion. I have a second. Second, all in favor, show of hands, please, on this, four of them now. And Chief stepped up for just a minute. So we're just going to skip down, let's go down to Agenda I, number 11 here, Resolution to Reconvey Property. Is he up there?
Miss Ivy Law.
Is that, okay.
Yeah.
That's how it turns.
So in the 1990s, the late 90s, the Town of Sparta received a piece of property from a group called Catless Development. And the deed stated that the use was for a proposed well site, so prior to the drawing water from the river. It was for a proposed well lot and water line in the east end. Over the last 20 years, the consideration or the payment for that well lot from the Town of Sparta was for the Town of Sparta to provide water to that tract. And maybe they had ideas of developing it sometime, but that never happened. So we never paid for the lot. They never asked for us to, but we never gave them what they were, the payment for what they were giving it for. So now, they are ready to now sell their tract, and they said, "Hey, we want our piece of property back. You never gave us the water, and you don't need it anymore." So I did a little research, and surprisingly, there's a statute for this. And the statute is for reconveying property when its intended use was not fulfilled. So it's for like a donation that somebody gives, but then you don't actually need that. And so because of that, the request from the, on the agenda is to do a resolution to basically give this piece of property back to that group who donated it to the town. And if it makes you feel any better, the face of the deed had Tom Douglas's signature on it, and it said, "Aim it for this piece of land, as we will give water to this tract," and he signed it. So I feel like there's no, I'm starting to ask the payment for it.
We need a motion.
You just need a motion to reconvey this back to the original...
For a resolution to reconvey.
Resolution for that, I think.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion for the resolution. Do I have a second?
Sure.
All in favor, show of hands, for that resolution, four of them. Coming through the door right there. We're just keeping one of these people here. All right, Chief, you're up, buddy. Have you ready to go? Everybody, I'd like to let everybody know. Chief, you, Chief Terry, Town of Sparta Police Department. I just want to break on you for a minute. I just want to say, hey, thanks for the job that you're doing. Appreciate it. Our citizens appreciate the job that you're doing, Chief.
We appreciate your power, Mr. Mayor. We certainly do. Some days, that's all we feel like we get, but it's nice to know that people are engaged and comfortable, for sure. I was hoping that our, our presentation would be a little better, but we had a problem with my Excel and what we had here on our computer. But that's okay. We're going to work through it. I know I've been, I've been giving council members, you know, quarterly reports. And you see these different categories where we have different numbers. And it's numbers, numbers, numbers. What I'm doing now is graphing those numbers as we spread that out, so we can see when we have a flux or a change, and maybe, why did that happen? Maybe I can answer, maybe I can't, but it gives me an idea. I'll, I'll give you an example, Mr. Town Manager. If you would scroll down, just give you a real quick look at it. Let's go down to accidents, traffic accidents. We have a lot of those. We had 85 last year. And we're on track to have more this year, I'm afraid. That's the graphic I missed. If you can correct it. I'm sorry. Like I said, I apologize again. Should have been better prepared. I thought we were, but that's my bad.
It's the split graph.
Oh, well, just, just real quick, and, and just to look at this, you know, you, you cruise along, we had 85 last year. And I started to keep the numbers in May of 2022, tried to keep that up. You see a spike at like 16, I can't remember the number that I see at the top, but you see a spike. You know, we got this eight as our baseline, and then you see a spike in November. July was that month we had the big spike in 2022. You go to August 23, almost a day, one number off. So that tells me that in July, that's our busiest month for traffic accidents. So it helps us prepare, helps me to prepare, to say, "Hey, more visibility, you know, be out there more." So that's, that's what all these numbers are about, is plotting graphs. So we can all look at it, make some determination of what is we're doing that's working? If we're doing something that's not working, then what can we do to correct that? So I hope you see that. We will have a better presentation next time, I promise, with the graphs. But as we, as we go along with your handout that I gave you tonight with the quarterly report, which is July, August, and September. September was a, was a very busy month, and I gave you a separate one for September standalone, because just looking at the dispatch calls from service, we had 320 that month. We were 35 criminal investigations. I felt like I was in CID unit again, and turning time back. A lot of those calls were child abuse calls, unfortunately, you know, DSS, elderly exploitation. Some things that we hate to see, but it does happen. And those, those kind of cases are very, very intensive. They should be. They go to priority with us to work, and we work a lot with DSS and the partnership with children, CAC, forensic interviews with the children, and so forth. But I want you to see some of that in, in September, when you look at the investigations and you see felony 8 and misdemeanor 27. That's 35 cases. So that's one of the things I want you to see for the month of September. Also, one of the other highlights of that month is involuntary commitments, and I'm going to talk a little bit about those tonight. We had 28 involuntary commitments that we set on last year. We're at 28 today. So we're on course to probably be in the high 30s, if not pushing 40 commitments this year. And that's what is absolutely adding pressure to our folks in our department, is depleting our manpower. Because we're sitting at the hospital 24 hours a day. There are a lot of, one of our commitments, not this last one, but the one before, was 150 man-outs. It was seven days and six nights before that commitment was released. And they were an elopement risk, so we had to sit with them for that whole time. We had a couple of those that month. So if you take 28, and we're shooting for 40, and you have half of those being those kind of commitments, elopement risks, so we've got to be there for security purposes, so that they don't leave. We're using one full-time officer and half of another one just to cover those things. And the Town Manager myself has spoken with the CEO of the hospital. We've offered some suggestions and ideas, trying to partner with them. But it's all met with negative results as of today. We still haven't gotten anywhere. It, it, when I say it adds an undue stress, it does, because the officer's there, you got one officer working at night, and they have to sit at the hospital. There's nobody in your calls here, Tank. There's somebody calling for us. And it's not that the county won't come help us, but that officer's sitting there saying, "I want to go and do my job." So that's, that's the issue that I've ever had. The, that's, that's the biggest thing I want to talk to y'all about tonight, the council itself. We're at a point where I, I don't, is the proverb, coming back to the Bible, to me, Proverbs 1522 says, "Wisdom is found in the multitude of counselors." That's what it means to me. It's not verbatim, but, you know, that's why I'm here tonight. We've looked at many different things, many different ways to partner, try to lend liability on the town, on the hospital, help incur some of these costs. And, and I, I don't think people truly understand that we're blessed to have a hospital here, and, and I'm thankful for it. I live right behind it, you know, next door, so... But also, with the hospital, comes another responsibility, and it falls upon the police department. And the first was, is talking about involuntary commitments. There's no security staff there. So, you know, it falls upon us to sit there throughout if this person has to be restrained, or they have to be held for many days, and they're at risk of walking off. And that's statutory. I have no, I have no recourse in it, because wherever the response is taken into custody, that's, that's whose responsibility it is. And if it's a person in the hospital that's there... And if it's a person in the hospital that's there and just becomes committed, then it's ours. Don't matter if they live in the county, if they live in Virginia or somewhere else. And we have a lot of those too, out of these, these numbers, I'm sure. This, this is, this has been increased for years across the state. It's actually, when Dorothy O'Dick's got shut down, when the state shut it down in Raleigh, it dumped it all back into local level. We had one commitment that we set with for six or seven days and we took them back home. We never even got them placed. When I say we, but the healthcare professionals and the health, never got them placed because they didn't have any room for them. So it makes me wonder sometimes, you know, we did our very best, but I don't know that we, anybody succeeded, you know, all parties involved. But that's, that's something I wanted to bring to y'all's attention because, you know, just the other week, we had, we spent 400 man hours on involuntary commitments at the hospital. And I have a great group of part-time people that I couldn't live without. But they can only work so many hours due to their retirement status. There, there's only so many hours that they can actually work. And there's, I only have so many officers to go around. So that's, that's, that's become a real issue. If you look through the numbers and you see how many you have and you see that number, you think, well, you've got five for the quarterly report. Well, that's five, that's a lot. That's, that's, that's quite a few, especially when you take three of them, maybe an elopement risk, that we got to be there around the clock. And so that's, that's one of the things I wanted to talk to you about and show you some of the numbers. But back to the numbers too, with the traffic stops. You see that fall off a little bit and I think the times they fall off is because we're spending our time on something else, IDC's at the hospital. We're not out there on patrol. We, like I said, that's, that's, that's kind of, well, I spoke enough of that, but the next, the next thing on the slide, not with Brian, has it, I actually brought a copy of it that, I don't know if you'll be able to see the chart title, maybe you'll see that. That's one for, it, it, it's pretty much a, a chart that shows the complaints, the total incidents, you know, the investigations, the arrests. And I apologize because you can't see it that well, you see all the colors, but you see those yellows and you see the incidents, you see the investigations in the green and look at those numbers when you start saying 50, 50, 50, you know, that takes, that takes a lot of manpower just to, to work the cases and, and just try to answer the calls and serve the public the best we can. One of the last ones that tells the whole story, I don't know if you have another one, you may not, but this is one of them that's, I went back and pulled actually numbers for 2018, prior to me, 2018, 2019, 2020, 21, 22 and up to 23. And you can see how this is, this, this workload has started. In 2018, there was 258 total reported incidents. We call them OCA. It's actually originating agency file number, so we can track. But 258 in 2018. In 2019, it was 276. In 2020, it was 374. In 2021, it was 382. So you can see from 258 to 382 in '21. Well, in '22, when I came along, it was 577, is what we had last year. And in 2023, we're at 567 as of yesterday. So we're going to hit 700. So we're going to triple those numbers this year. So with all that said, I need another officer too. I really do. And I hate to bring that, that, that burden to the board, but I have, I had no other choice but ask for that, some relief to recover this. The commitments are not going to decrease. I think that the whole world's dealing with that, the volume of calls and what we're experiencing. You know, we never saw a lull except February, if you look at the charts, where we fell below 300 at all. It just stayed constant throughout the year, which I thought, you know, we were just waiting to hang, we're going to get a break, it's going to be reprieve and we, it just never happened this, this entire year. So, but anyway, that's, that's what I wanted to talk to you all about and ask you to consider that. We have some great folks, I'm thankful for them and we'll keep moving forward.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, would they somewhat help for some helpful at all if we actually requested the administrative from the hospital and some of those folks to come to this council so that we could speak to them directly since apparently the efforts of you and the chief have not produced, produced any movement on their part? And would it help as a, would it help to ask them to come here and, and we could talk to them? I don't know that it would hurt, but we've got to do something.
Sure. I, I think dialogue is good. I will say, Chief, myself, Whitney, wearing two hats and the CEO have met, we're making progress. Obviously, we needed that yesterday, but you know, agreements, partnerships that have financial ties and impacts take time, so.
Well, maybe it would help if we ask them and all of them.
Sure. I think dialogue coming from this council to the CEO and the board of the hospital may be productive.
What's, what kind of assistance, if any, are we getting from the county? Any from, from their officers at all?
If we are, if we are at the hospital and there's a call in town and we're sitting on, on the IDC, they will respond to a call if, you know, when they can. And that's, it's, it's either, it's kind of the same way, you know, we try to return the favor. If we're not sitting on IDC and they have a call that we can get to outside of town, it's not, well, wherever we're sat, if it's, if it's his call, we're going to go and help him. But, but we do, they do work together to give an officer a break, you know, from sitting there so they can get out and patrol town a little bit. Sometimes they're busy too. So sometimes if we have multiple IDC's, I've seen us have four over there at one time. So, you know, maybe one or two officers can sit. We don't have to have one officer per individual, but when you have, you know, we had one that ran through the hospital here the other week. And so, you know, went through a door and out the front and, you know, we catch them before they get to the road because, you know, they're just, you know, they're non-stable and we have to, we have to really pay attention and be there. But, but the county, the county, I think their numbers were like 16 the last I heard and that's been a few weeks ago, so I don't know if it's increased, but I knew our numbers were a little higher.
So, so, so they have IDC's on their own?
Yes, they do, they do.
And so those numbers combined, I mean, between the sheriff's department and our guys, we're spending a lot of time over there.
Yes.
What, aside from trying to fund security at the hospital, what's the other solution? Having full-time officers over there?
This, this is, it is, this is a situation when you, like if, if we have a full-time officer there and the hospital was, say reimbursing us for their time or helping with the cost, then, you know, you, if the hospital is paying for it, then you run into some liability, you know, who's liable, you know, who's paying workers comp, are there liability insurance and so forth? But with that, there's a third-party entity that I, that I checked with, that's a company that would let me sign a contract, they would do the scheduling and they provide multimillion dollars worth of liability and also workers comp. Of course, they charge about five bucks extra an hour for that, you know, to, to the person that we provide security for, if they were reimbursing us, if we worked something like that. Now, if we had full-time security at the hospital as the police, I think that the hospital would have to agree to that. I mean, there's nothing we could do just to say, hey, we're going to provide that because, you know, that's kind of co-mingling the police with healthcare.
Yeah. This is much more complicated than just the hospital's not providing security and the town has to provide this. Let me let you know, we have been dealing with this problem for more than 20 years. It is a mental health crisis in our community. Our numbers are growing because we have more mental health patients from whoever they come from, I don't know. If they originate in the town, the town has to sit on those IDC's. If they originate in the county, the county has to sit on them. The statute says that the entities, meaning the county or the town, have to control those people while they're in their custody. They're in their custody until they're placed in a bed, meaning a mental health facility, which we don't have in this county. So yes, if the hospital had security, that might lessen the burden of the town or the county, but the statute says the town and the county have to control those people until they are where they're supposed to be. So the hospital has openly spoken to Ryan and Chief and myself saying, we want to help lessen this burden that is your burden, it would help us too, meaning the hospital, but they don't have an obligation to, they don't need security for their regular patients. They need security for mental health and mental health, the law says that these entities have to control these patients. So it's a mess and the hospital doesn't have security to do it and these guys don't have the, it's not as easy as the hospital's not helping. The hospital's willing to help in ways they don't even, they're not even required to help with this. But they're not going to do it at, we'll take on this full burden, we'll help with this.
Well, and, and my suggestion of, do we have full-time, not for security for the hospital, but do we hire full-time officers where that's all they do?
Well, it's like if we had two on the shift, just speaking, if we had two on the shift, which we can't, we don't have enough manpower to do that. If you have one at the hospital, then you do have one here on patrol and they can switch out and they can help and assist. That's the goal I want to get to sometime, is to have two on the shift because, you know, we're, we definitely have plenty of work for that, you know, it's not a waste of money. But that would help lighten the burden. But yeah, I, I think that if we had another officer, a full-time officer to sit there, you know, that gives us another 2,016 hours is what you have in a, in a work cycle in a year for an employee. So that gives you that, that extra, you know, hours for that kind of thing. And like I said, we use the part-time a lot too, but the part-times, you know, they, some of them have other jobs and some are limited, they can only work 1,000 hours a year without affecting their retirement. So they reach over the threshold, so we have to be careful with that. And then like I said, you've got 24-hour coverage, so that's, that's the sticky part. When I started in '84, the commitments that we had back then, and that's been a long time ago, there was 48 hours. When I took the respondent, as I call them, into my custody, took them to the hospital, it's 48 hours that commitment was good for. And that meant in 48 hours, most of them wasn't re-upped, as we call it, or reapplied for, they were gone to a facility. They were took to Broadtender, some of these other facilities. And now it's seven days. Seven days they've increased. And it's because, like we said, we have a crisis here in our country and I, I don't have the answers of why, but it's, it's happening everywhere. And it's, it's continually grown and, and just the last, you know, less than two years I've been here, it's exploded, it seems like for us. And we do also have, the other mystery is, like I said, if they come on hos, you know, they come into town and they stay in a hotel, for instance, we've had that on occasions and they, they get committed, maybe they live somewhere else, but they're here in town. So it's our responsibility to sort of that commitment, take them before, you know, to the hospital and all they do is, I say all they do, but I'll mean it that way, they, they medically check them out and then mental health is called in for evaluations and sorting. I know I spoke to someone, mental health professional, and we talked about this at length and they said in 2011, we had four, 2011. So in 13 years, what we're at today with the numbers and like I said, it's us at 28, the county is saying 20, that's 48 and we're, we're still, we still have a quarter of this year left to go with that tally of numbers.
Basically, what I hear you asking for is another officer.
I've asked for two. I, I did ask for two in the budget and I got one and this time I'm appreciative of that.
Just lose one, layoff or?
Yes, yes, we had, and we're trying to replace, you know, one of the female officers that moved, they bought a home, lost that woman and has left. And like I said, it's, yeah, it's, it's, that's only, you know, when you start looking at the hours, that's only 4,000 hours if you worked every single day as a police officer or two officers, it's 2,016 hours. And if you divide that with 30, just to say we had 30, that's 53 hours per respondent, per IDC. And that's not a lot, that's only two days and most of them are going four, five, six, seven days, you know, it's, it takes, it takes time to find them bed and then, you know, I'm not, just like the sheriff's office, their responsibility is to pick them up and take, and they have to transport, that's, that's.
Like I said, what I hear you asking for is another officer. Is this something that we can do in a budget or is it something that the police department can do in their budget? Or is it something that we just can't afford?
Well, for the, the benefit of the council, what, what I perceive is this is a, a pain of growth. As always, local government is always the last thing to catch up with the growth and we've anticipated that. We've added two positions to the police department over the last two years. Unfortunately, our path to add services has not paced our projection for growth. You see it, growth in service and that's by us being more proactive, more commitments. So we have outpaced ourselves. So I agree with Chief, we need two officers to get us to a, I think a comfortable area. Until we got the new fleet in, we also didn't have enough vehicles to put them in. So we've had to work two different angles. We're now good with fleets, with equipment, et cetera. Can we add two staff? Yes. But that's.
Where's the money coming from?
That's $130,000 that we did not anticipate in the budget. So we're going to have to find that. Can we? I, I think if this council tasks.
Hey, you're good at finding money.
Taking out, we could sharpen our pencil and we could, we can find it. It may draw down some of that fund balance, but it's there. And for a public service, I think the citizens expect that. So luckily, I'm not in your seat. If you task us to find money, we can do that.
I think that would be the most reasonable thing to do is to see if we can forehand and look.
Find the money to hire a new one, another officer.
And that's just to see where, how our budget stands and see if we can find it somewhere. I think that would be the best option to go.
I'll take a McLaughlin.
And give Ryan and Phil enough chance to see what's up.
I'll save it for you.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor, show a hand. Four on the name. So another task for the town manager.
And the finance.
And the financing. No pressure. Thank you, Chief, once again, appreciate the time. The police, we, we iterate that year to all of you, how much this council and these citizens at Town Hall appreciate what they do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Jedi number 12, as we move along, is a pickleball project support request.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town Council, as you heard Steve Mason update the council last month, the pickleball project at Cross Park was starting to get underway. They actually had some in-kind of contributions for site prep, gravel. They actually had some in-kind contributions for site prep, gravel, et cetera, that worked commenced, and as with any good plan, some things just go awry. So, they were preparing that site, actually had to excavate into the bank a little further than anticipated, which now requires a retaining wall and a drain. So, much of their donations has been in-kind contributions for, you know, equipment, manpower, labor, et cetera. Of Kraut's Park. There is alternate access of all Grandview Drive by going behind Grandview Funeral Home. So, that project is still anticipated about a three-month duration, and that road will be closed until then. So, paving project, unfortunately, as with everybody else, the contractors having some staffing issues, they have fallen a couple of weeks behind on schedule. I have a meeting next Tuesday for a progress report, at which time we anticipate they're going to request additional time to complete that project. Originally, we said end of October. Unfortunately, here in the mountains, it gets cold, you can't pour asphalt, and asphalt plants shut down. That is outside of our control, as well as the contractor's control, so it is likely asphalt will not be complete this year, and it will resume form with it next year. Our funding is still secured, we will not lose that, so prices will be held at what was bid, so I don't think there's any risk to the town to allow a time extension. But for everybody's information, it does look like that paving's going to carry over. Last thing I have is an event request at the stage at Kraut's Park. It is a memorial event with a fundraising component in memory of Sam Cox. His wife, Ramona Cox, related to Dr. Jeff Cox, has requested, it will be a community event, free of charge, awareness for mental health, suicide is the, the focus. They have requested June eighth of next year.
Somebody, say it.
Motion in a second, all in favor of that event, four over.
As I'll have, Mr. Mayor.
We'll end up other business, and we'll talk about a zoning request.
Yes. We received a last-minute rezoning request for parcel three-zero-seven-one-four-two-one-four-one-nine. I know y'all know exactly where that is.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
It is off Highland Drive. They're requesting from R-twenty to R-twelve, and I recommend referring that to the planning board, and we can do both parcels next month.
Somebody, say it.
Second, all in favor, show a hands, four over. You have any other business?
That's all.
Just want to bring up a couple, a couple of quick points. This week is homecoming week up here at Allagay High School, so that's why we're calling it Green and Gold. We hope our boys can come through with a big homecoming win. Mayor predicts twenty-six sixteen over North Stokes. October.
Make your bid.
October twenty-fifth, we do have a candidate forum that is going to be put on by the Friends of the Library at the library at six o'clock. So, all those that are running for public office of the town's SPhora seats, you're encouraged to come, be there at six P.M. And that's brought to you by Friends of the Library. Ms. Pat Polly and Joyce Spies will be there, they'll be asking the candidates some questions to go along. November seventh, of course, is election day, and it is also the same day that we will have our town meeting in November. So, we will be having a town meeting while the election is being conducted, so just keep your pulse on that right there, just wanted to bring that up.
We'll go with Shannon.
And, uh...
You need a Shannon?
We'll meet down here. The election is actually, you'll be voting in the county building, elections office, in the conference room down there, where we always have our, your election down there. Again, just wanted to give praise to our maintenance department. Those guys have now spent a lot of nights out fixing water lines, sewer pipes, and everything down here at this bridge, it just keeps busting. We ask our citizens to please be patient with this, and folks, if I could have ESP, ESP or ESPN for that matter, I would tell you when a water break was getting ready to happen, but I can't give you that information, because it don't happen until it happens. So, just be, be patient, everything's going to be all right. Good news, I want to leave on a good note here in this other business before we go to close session of public comments, is that I want to thank Senator Ralph Hyde, I also want to thank Representative Ray Pigott, and all of the representatives and senators that supported the town's Sphora, and awarded the town's Sphora fifteen million dollars for a new sewer plant. That is huge, that continues our infrastructure rebuild, and hopefully in the next two to three years, the town's Sphora will have its roads paved, its water lines redone, its sewer lines redone, and its sewer plant up to code, a brand-new one. So, we have made some great, great strides. That's almost fifty million dollars in three years, we've got fixed things here in our community, and that's saying a lot.
Thank you for being a screen you will, making that happen, Mayor.
Appreciate all you do.
Gift of gab, but appreciate all that. So, I'll end at that, and I'll open up the fourth floor, excuse me, for public comments at this time. Is there anybody that'd like to come to the podium and make a public comment about anything that's happened tonight, or anything that's going on in the future? There being no movement, we will close our public comment opportunity, and I'll have to entertain a motion to go into the closed session.
No move.
Second, all in...